To order the Hingham School Committee meeting of August 22nd, 2022. We are here at Town Hall and we are also having remote participation via Zoom. This meeting is being offered remotely as an alternative means of public access pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair, that's me, at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that I may inform other participants of said recording. Is anyone recording? Anybody online? All right. Great. All right. Thank you. We're welcome, everybody. Our first, second order of business is approval of minutes. We have minutes of the meeting held on July 25th in everybody's packets. They were a little bit delayed in getting in there, but people are ready to vote. I would take a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on July 25th, 2022. Second?
Second. Thank you. Any discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Item three, questions and comments. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we've set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of this meeting for comments or questions that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not on tonight's agenda. If anyone wishes to speak, please raise your hand, either in person or on Zoom. State your name and address and address your comments to the Chair. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of the responsibility of the school committee. As established by Mass. General Law, the responsibilities of the school committee are, one, to select and evaluate the superintendent; two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and three, establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy of others. The public comment period is not a time of debate or response to comments by the school committee, and the school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of these comments made during public comment period. And just so folks know, in addition to this open public comment period for items not on the agenda, the, this committee's practice is to also provide time for questions and comments from the public while we discuss new business items on the agenda. So, that out of the way. Does anyone have any comments? Or section? Nothing? No, I'm on the line. All right. Fantastic. Then we shall move on to item four, which is the superintendent's report. Take it over to you, Dr. Adams.
So first on, I'll invite Erica Pollard to come up. Erica Pollard is our World Language Department Director. She, when I, Erica and I met in the spring, we were discussing some of the initial 21-22 data on World Language data, in which I was quite impressed with the accomplishments of our students. So I invited her today to come and present some of that data, give us a short presentation. You have a short presentation and you also have a longer report in your packet. So she's going to highlight some of the elements of the data and also how the department uses it in order to inform how to move forward in continuous improvement. We hope also that this can be one of several updates we bring to the school committee to sort of highlight the great work that teachers are doing and highlight the accomplishments both of our teachers and students. So I'll pass it over to Erica.
All right. Thank you all so much for giving me the opportunity to share with you some of these achievements of our students in World Language, which are due not only to their hard work, but also to the hard work of our teachers, K through 12, who are doing really, really great work. This is particularly exciting for me because I don't usually have data to present, but you know, there's no MCAS in World Language, but now that we have the opportunity to do some proficiency testing, I have some things that I can share. So the first thing that I'd like to share is our progress on the Seal of Bili literacy initiative. The Seal of Bili literacy is an award that's granted by the state to students who are able to demonstrate a proficiency level of intermediate, high, or higher. And there's a little more information in your packets about what that intermediate high means. The state has chosen intermediate high as the benchmark for this award because it's the first point in language learning when students are really able to use the language that they've learned in a professional setting. So we've been participating in the Seal of Bili literacy since 2019, and one of the things that I like about this particular program is it allows us to test students and then give them the opportunity to retest if there are parts of the exam, if they, for example, qualify in three domains but not in the fourth, they can retake that section. And I think it really promotes goal setting and encourages them to focus on their personal growth. So this past year, we had 12 students receive the Seal of Bili literacy with distinction, which is the highest designation of the Seal of Bili literacy that the state awards. It's correlated to a proficiency level of advanced low. Thirty-three students received the Seal of Bili literacy, which is again at that intermediate high, and 118 students tested at the intermediate-mid proficiency level. And I highlight that even though it's not included in the Seal of Bili literacy, because that is the sort of working fluency level of language. Maybe not enough to use it in a professional setting, but enough to really navigate most of the situations that kids are going to come across in the target culture. Now, this just looks at the class of 2022, and intermediate-mid is really a goal for students who have reached, who, sorry, who are finishing a sequence of four years of study. It's not the case for all of our seniors, which is why that number's not a little bit higher, but I think that those are really impressive numbers, and they are an improvement over the previous year where we had one Seal of Bili literacy with distinction and 41 Seal of Bili literacy. So it's nice to see them moving from the Seal to the Seal with distinction. Now, in the last year, the Department of Ed offered up some grant money that allowed us to expand proficiency testing beyond what we had been doing, which was just testing our seniors. So each course that we offer in our department has a proficiency target that's set for it that is associated with a target score on the exam we use, is called the stamp exam. Those targets are based on research from the Foreign Service Institute about how long it takes people generally speaking to learn a second language. So this year, we were able to test a wide variety of students in our Level 2, Level 3, and Level 4 classes, as well as all of our 8th grade students, and we have 65.8% of students meeting or exceeding our scores. I felt pretty good about that. Now, as you look at the sort of breakdown by school and by language, there are some patterns that emerge as to how students are doing in particular languages, and they're pretty, pretty clearly correlated with two factors. The first one is the level of difficulty of the language itself. So the Foreign Service Institute categorizes languages based on basically how different they are from English, so how difficult they would be for an English speaker to acquire. Spanish and French are Level 1 languages. Mandarin Chinese is a Level 5 language, so there's a pretty significant difference in terms of difficulty. And another factor here is the length of study. Most of our students start studying Spanish in kindergarten. They have the opportunity to study French starting in 6th grade, and Latin and Chinese starting in 9th grade. So I think the numbers, when you keep that in mind, fall in a fairly logical way. So all of that information tells us some important things. Most of our students are meeting or exceeding their targets. Not all of them, so obviously, we're going to work to make that number be all of the students. We're also happy to see that most students who continue in four years of World Language at the high school are able to reach at least that level of intermediate-mid. That's the level where they're really going to be able to use the language productively in the world. Again, there's clear correlation between difficulty, length of study, and the overall proficiency that students reach in a language. And another point that's particularly useful for us in teaching is the fact that the scores in receptive language, so their reading and their listening skills, are significantly higher than their scores in expressive language. That's not terribly surprising, because we know about language acquisition that those are the skills that naturally develop first, but it still gives us some, some material to work with as we think about improving our instruction going forward. The other thing that's nice about this set of data is previously, the only information we had was about AP scores. And they told us very clearly how well our absolute best students were doing, but it's really nice to see that we're seeing high levels of achievement all across the board. It's not just our AP kids who are reaching the goals that are set for them. Looking forward to the next couple of years, based on the expanded testing we were able to do this year, we have 40 students who are not yet seniors and have already qualified for the Seal of Bili literacy, assuming that they passed their MCAS exam. And we have four non-señors who have already qualified for the Seal with distinction, which requires that they have an ELA-MCAS score of advanced, but assuming that they're able to achieve that, we're going to have a lot more awards to give out in the next year. The grant money that we were given has been expanded into next year, so we're going to be able to continue testing pretty wisely, widely, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what that longitudinal data looks like as we keep going. The pandemic made it kind of difficult to track data from year to year in a meaningful way. So what are we going to do with all this information? Because of those discrepancies in domain scores, we are going to put some more effort into speaking skills. We want to support target language output by developing communicative tasks that are purposeful and authentic and engaging for students to really get them speaking as much as possible. The data also shows that students progress more quickly at the beginning stages of language learning than they do as they get further up. Again, that's something that language acquisition research tells us will be true, but another focus for us will be to maintain that momentum in the upper-level language courses by providing students with explicit instruction and practice, not only just in like talking about their day, but about communicative strategies. So paraphrasing, circumlocution, elaboration, connecting sentences, so that they really are getting to a higher level of language use. I think that that will yield some good results. As I mentioned, we're going to be having additional proficiency assessments in the coming school year, and as I mentioned, that there's that correlation between length of study and overall levels of proficiency, I'm excited that we're going to have a pilot Mandarin Chinese course in the middle school this year, so we'll be able to see how that goes. And in addition to the state seal that we gave this year, there's a new seal available called the Global Seal of Bili Literacy that we will be able to award to students at that intermediate-mid, that working proficiency level. So I'm excited to recognize the achievements of, I mean, in the class of 2022, it would have been 118 more kids, and I think it's really validating for them to see an outside source give them proof that their language use really is good. And I think it's easy to get discouraged when you're learning a second language, and we've seen that kids really respond well to hearing positive feedback about their performance. So that's what I have for you tonight. There is more information in your packet if you want to dig deeper, but I'm also happy to answer any questions.
Awesome. That's so amazing to hear. Good to have actual data to go along with it. I was wondering, what was the name of the test that the data's from?
So we use two different assessments.
Okay.
The stamp assessment, which stands for standard-based measured of, measures of proficiency, is what we use in Spanish, French, and in Mandarin. And in Latin, the test is called the Alira, which is just a reading test, because that's really the focus in Latin classes on reading text.
Yep. And do you know, just can you tell me anything about it, like how long the test takes to administer and like how?
Yep.
I know that's a concern of balancing, getting good data from testing but not wanting to pull kids from class to test too much, just wondering where the balance is.
Absolutely. It's definitely something that, that I think is worth, you know, worth talking about. The answer is that it varies widely depending on the level of proficiency. So both of these exams are computer adaptive, so the better you do, the more questions you answer correctly, the harder the questions will be. So for some of our very top students, it's taking them four or so hours. We are actively trying to balance that with less testing in other parts of the curriculum where we can, because it's a lot.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks.
I have just a question for the assignment. There's 118 students in the middle received the seals. How many students total in the class of 2022 actually took four years of language?
So, I feel like I have that number somewhere, but I might have to get back to you on that. It's hard to say, because like I said, they're not all in it for four years, and we had some seniors who are testing in, for example, Spanish 3 or Spanish 4. So I'm going to get back to you with the answer to that question. Thank you.
So two quick comments. First of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
Second of all, Dr. Adams, I appreciate bringing these things forward. I think it's going to be really helpful. And the question I have is, so this is one measure of success. So let's say everybody achieves a top distinction, like what ballpark percent of success for your overall program would you put this as? Is it like, you know, it's very, it's awesome for the kids, it's awesome for the teachers? Is it 10%? Is it 15? There's a lot more that you do.
Of students that are getting the Seal of Bili literacy?
No, like as a program, so this is one thing that you're looking at to measure what success looks like. Is this a small component, big component?
For us, it's really, I, I have found it very valuable and very important to have this external validation. One of the reasons is because it's really hard for a teacher, proficiency is, is separate from, I taught you and now I test you on the thing that I taught you. It's really independent of curriculum and tests, what you can really do without, without prompting. They don't know what's going to be on the test. So I think that it's a really important measure, and we're working on developing assessments for the classroom that, I'm not going to say mimic this format, because we're not going to give them more, you know, standardized testing, but that give them the chance to really use language in a broader context, rather than in a very narrow, for example, here's the vocabulary, did you learn it all?
Awesome.
So it's a good, it's a good tool for us to use as we adjust instruction.
Great question. I'll take it. Keep where you're at. So who, that would do, because I was thinking about the two, that it's such a delicate balance between getting the data, but also just having kids take the language for the love of language, right?
Yep.
And just trying something new, and not being like, oh, maybe I should stick with Spanish, because that's a safe choice, because I, you know what I mean? Like my kids switched over to Chinese in high school.
And it was great.
That's great. That's a valid word for teacher. But that's what I think, like that's what we just want to balance those two.
Yeah. And so one of the things that we talked about as a department when we moved to test this larger group was, okay, what other testing can we not do so that we are not just testing all the time? You know, that's not, not helpful and it's not fun for the kids. But I will say that a lot of students have come to me after doing these tests and really been, they, they have this thought of like, oh, I've studied all this Spanish or whatever, and am I really any good at it? And then they get this result and they're like, I am really good at this. And it's just really, really a positive experience for them. So on the whole, I think it's worth it, even though it is more testing time.
And I know you don't have this data, but I'm looking into the future year. I know a lot of the ELA success has broken students down into special ed, and I'm wondering if that would be a good place for the data to go, if we could make sure that the success is being sort of shared across, oops, shared across the board? Sorry.
Absolutely. And so I wasn't able to, the sample size was sort of like, I wasn't able to get there with this, but I agree with you that that's definitely something.
I wasn't even going to ask the question, because I don't expect you to have the data right now.
But it's definitely something that I want to track, particularly when we're looking at, so this year, I'm hoping to test some of our more beginner levels of students, maybe some who didn't take language, for example, in middle school, because they had other, you know, strategies courses they needed, and see how those students are doing when it comes to making the progress we hope to see.
Awesome.
So, I'm on it. All right. Thank you very much. And I'm going to make note of that question. I'm going to get back to you.
In your packet was also the personnel report. It indicated our new hires. We are down to just a few positions that we have left. These are our new hires of, as of today. We have next week, Monday and Tuesday, our new teacher orientation, and are looking forward to welcoming these new members of the Hingham Public Schools to our community and learning from their past practice and contributing to our schools. So we look forward to welcoming them.
Yes. Do we have any number of, know the number of paras that were short? I know P O P beginning questions about, there's sort of a statewide para, trouble hiring paras. I'm wondering if we're fully hired with them.
I think we just have a few left. There's just maybe a handful left in each building, so, which a handful is like two or three in each building that we're still trying to figure out. But I know I heard Susan, Director of Human Resources, say that we have more applicants than we've had in the past, including for subs. We have more substitutes who've applied. It seems like folks are becoming more comfortable with the idea of going into schools and being in the workforce. So it's very, very hopeful that, you know, we are getting very close to being fully staffed, even in our paraprofessionals. So, so we're getting close.
Substitution shortages that exist both statewide and nationally, that speaks very well of Hingham, that we're doing so well with hiring.
In addition to the paras, are, how many other positions are we, or, I don't want to put you on the spot to name all of them, but.
I think we have three teaching positions that are left.
Three teaching positions.
Then one was a surprise in the last week or so that we didn't know of. So some of those are some long-term subs, so we are very close to having teachers all in place for the beginning of school.
That's great. Thank you. This, this looks like about 20, 24 new positions. That seems about, is that higher than usual? Well, I'm not your first-year teacher.
Yeah. But knowing you, I'm pretty sure you probably know what the previous years were. I think it's pretty consistent with past years, noting that not all of those are first-year teachers. Some come with several years of experience, and some are first-year teachers, so it's a, it's a range of folks, a range of teachers.
It seems about the way, having done the new teacher orientation, it seems about that it seems that they're using a lot of time. That's great. And it's a mix, just for the kids, we don't see the fact that it's a mix of, including facilitator, guidance counselor, some reading specialists and teachers as well, so.
Thank you. Any other questions on that?
Next is, I'm going to welcome Meg Mayo Brown. She is the, my coach from the new superintendent, superintendent, superintendent induction program, sorry, it's a mouthful. We call it NISIP for short, and glad to have Meg here. She's just going to introduce herself to the committee.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. So my goal is twofold with you for a few minutes tonight. First is to give you a little background about myself, like who is coaching your new superintendent. And then I know the new superintendent induction program is familiar to many of you, but I'll just go over some of the highlights of the program, if that makes sense. Okay. Great. So a brief, a little bit of a leadership profile about me. I've served as a superintendent in Massachusetts for the past 14 years. The last six have been in Barnstable, which means I've led through COVID and understand all of the challenges that we've all faced over the past couple of years. I retired after 36 years in education on June 30th, so I'm getting used to retirement. Thank you. I see some applause over there. I'm also the recipient of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Women's Leadership Award, as well as the following year, I received the Mass. President's Award. I've served as the Chair of the Accountability and Assistance Council for the Massachusetts Board of Education, and I have co-chaired the Massachusetts Urban Superintendent's Network. Most recently, I've served on Aspen Institute Distinguished Council of Educators for the National Commission on Social, Emotional, and Academic Development. What I'm most proud of is that I am the mother of four adult boys, men. Sorry, sorry. Men. As you probably know, the genesis of the new superintendent's induction program, it was a collaboration between the Department of Education, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and the Mass. Association of School Superintendents to support new superintendents through their first three years of leadership. The key intended outcome is to support Dr. Adams through her entry plan, her entry findings, and then her entry report, which will indeed align with the strategic plan that you have approved. That is the work of her first, her first year. My role in that is to support her through her leadership in that work with all of you as you have set those goals for her. This is a three-year induction program. Again, the first 12 to 18 months focus on entry planning and alignment with the strategic plan. After going through her entry findings and entry report, Dr. Adams will be in a terrific position to inform you next summer about any adjustments she may want to recommend to you regarding the strategic plan after have gone through a lot of listening with your, with your stakeholders. We do encourage our superintendents, and in particular, Dr. Adams, to go slow to go fast, is a term that you'll hear, or she'll hear often in the program. Dr. Adams is in a very unique position because you appointed her so early in the year, she was able to really hit the ground running July 1st, unlike many superintendents who are just beginning their superintendency, which has been, I think, a really wonderful opportunity for her to begin to get to know the Hingham community and stakeholders as she's doing her, her entry plan. Much of her work will involve, again, supporting your strategic, the district's strategic plan, but also her work is through the principals, right? Through their school goals, through their school improvement plans as well. Margaret, Dr. Adams is going to be spending time in content days through the new superintendent's induction program. Much of those are online this year, so she'll have a two-hour block one day, followed by a two-hour block the next day. And that's really about peer engagement, as well as continuing to talk with her colleagues and the program about the strategies and what she's learning about, within the community. I'll be here up to six hours a month with Dr. Adams. We could be walking through classrooms, observing instruction together. It could be situations where I'm observing and giving Dr. Adams feedback about a leadership team meeting, or even observing her leadership in a school committee meeting. So in sum, that's the, that's the program. And again, just really delighted to be here and be working with Dr. Adams. I think she's a very, she brings a lot to the superintendency. Someone said to me, does she need a lot of coaching? No, she doesn't need a lot of coaching, but you know, I'm here to support her. So thank you for the opportunity.
Stepping up in your retirement is probably a nice way to ease into it, right?
That's right.
You don't want to rip the Band-Aid off too fast. No, we appreciate you taking the time and signing up to do this and working with Dr. Adams. Any questions or comments from anyone on the committee?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Check the cord. Sorry. You're good?
Yep.
And then, moving on to five, agenda item five, communications. Do you have any communication from the superintendent?
Just, I would say that we received, I believe it was last week, no, it was the week before, the days are fuzzy, COVID guidance from the state. Mostly the COVID guidance remains the same as last spring. And we will be sending out communication both to families and staff indicating there's no mask requirement for the coming school year, although we will, as just last, as we did last year, respect anybody's choice to wear masks in school and make sure that our students and staff understand that there may be students who are wearing masks. Masks will still be required in the health rooms, and we've ordered and have plenty in, of masks available to support the use of them in the nurses' offices. In addition, the state is no longer recommending any pool testing or any state, test and state kind of programming, so we will not be doing any testing in school. And I think those are kind of like the two main components. The state is also not collecting any data on COVID cases in schools any longer. So it pretty much continues status quo from last spring, except for the elimination of that pool testing that did continue into the spring. So, and we'll be sharing that information, as well as the DPH guidelines. We would still encourage, just like we did last spring, families to be, and staff to be aware of the symptoms of COVID and communicate with their school nurses if they do have a positive case, and encourage us to be vigilant so we can ensure that our students and staff are safe in the, in the fall.
Will the school nurses still be keeping data on?
We have talked about keeping in data internally so that we can track whether there's an outbreak or any concern in a particular building or school, yes?
Okay.
Or classroom.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other communications? Anyone on the committee? Okay.
Will the school nurses still be keeping data on...
We have talked about keeping in data internally, so that we can track whether there's an outbreak or any concern in a particular building or school, yes.
Okay.
Or classroom.
All right, um, any other communications, anyone on the committee? Um, all right, we'll move on to number six, unfinished business. Um, six point one is to review student handbooks and act as appropriate. So I think, Jen, are you gonna lead us through this as the part of policy, take your, take your time?
So we're starting with the handbooks, correct?
Yeah.
Handbooks?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, in your packet, there are memos from the principals that, um, outline their changes in each of the handbooks. Um, and I'm just gonna briefly go over the changes that are related to the school committee policies. Um, as you know, the school committee, our, our policy manual was revised, um, last two years, and it was approved last, the end of twenty twenty-one, which is probably a year ago. Um, and there are many areas of the student handbooks that reflect many of our policies. Um, so for, the subcommittee went through the handbooks, um, and then there were recommendations that were made. Um, I'm just gonna briefly outline a few of them. For elementary, it was recommended to update the attendance policy language to reflect, um, current school committee policy, as well as Mass General Law. Um, transportation, bus discipline, and promotion retention were updated to reflect our policy language. And for the middle school, it was, um, the, it was recommended to update and include, and the equal opportunity for all students and staff, um, and to change the bus school protocols, drugs and alcohol, sexual harassment, uh, so that they were updated to reflect all of our policies. And then for the high school, it was, uh, updating also equal opportunity for all students, um, attendance, buses, drugs and alcohol, the dress code, sexual harassment, hazing, and civil rights protection sections, which are, again, reflect our policies. And then in all three of the handbooks, the bullying and harassment sections will now include the definitions of cyberbullying, as well as language on addressing, um, the bullying, um, in and on, for those on IEP. And then lastly, all the handbooks will now include a section at the end that has links to frequently access to our school committee policies. They're all linked up for the ones that are related to the handbooks. And I also just wanna quickly thank, I know they're not here, but, um, if they're watching, just thank you to all of the, the building principals. Um, their turnaround time on this was, um, very impressive, and I just wanted to thank them for their, all the work on that. And then also, this is just, this is kinda like the first step of their revision of the, um, hand, handbooks. Um, we started with the mean school committee policies, and then through the school councils, they will be working through the rest of the handbook, making sure that they're updated and following all of our policies. But we got a lot of meat done. Any questions on the handbooks?
Yes, also I want to thank the principals, but also to the policies of the committee, thank you. Very much to the three of you for working through these, um, and for Dr. Adams for jumping in and making sure that we were, um, getting these updated. I know it's a little bit later than we'd like, um, but it was important, I think, to have the handbooks and the policies aligned. And I know there's gonna be more work done during the school year to really, um, hone in on some of the areas. Um, one thing that I wanted to note is, um, in the attendance policies, I was looking at those, in the packet, the updated, um, policies, and there's really not any significant change, but I had gotten a lot of communications from students, and I think Dr. Adams had as well, about the opportunity for students to be able to take mental health days, um, particularly at the high school. And a couple of parents had reached out as well. And I think that does, my read of, that is allowed for in the policy, right? I mean, they can either be excused absences as medical absences, um, as well as students do have the ability for, um, I do sort of unexcused absences, but non-exempt absences, that that can fall under as well. So I do want, um, as much as we need students to be in school, um, as many of the hundred and eighty days that they can, when people do need a break, I think the policies do allow for, um, for those breaks to be taken. So, um, any other, yep, Jen?
I have two quick comments. Uh, all of the policies talk, refer, when they're, go through the anti-discrimination policies, talk about, uh, disability. Don't talk about special ed status, which is fine. I just wanted to be sort of explicit that it's the intention of us that we're including special ed status, uh, along with disability, even though special ed status isn't necessarily tied to disability. Uh, I just heard, heard countless stories over the years of kids being bullied because they've written a strategies class or something similar. So I just wanted to put that intention out there. Um, and just because I think it's important to make kind of the quiet part public, 'cause one of the parts, uh, on the Family School Partnership says that most of the revisions were, uh, inspired by conversations with teachers who've expressed concerns about trends in their communication with parents. I'm just wondering if anyone here could comment on that, or if that's really just more a question for Rick?
I think that was in response to some of the changes around dress code and some of the, the, um, changes we did at, at first, that it was in communication with teachers, some of the things they had been seeing in the school.
Okay.
They were trying to address those.
It just seems that policy is changing because of a trend in communication with parents. We should explicitly talk about the trend in communication with the parents, if it's affecting policy. Thank you.
Yeah, just, um, in addition to what Tim had said, the, um, I think the definition that is provided for, like, uh, mission statement and the groupings, um, I think it should be consistent with what we have currently. I know we've got our new strategic plan, but also in the equity section of the, um, website, to, it, to more succinctly say, um, these are the groups that are covered. Um, so that was just a minor thing. Um, but then the other part that I had noted was in the discipline, there's the progression, discipline decisions shall be the responsibility of the principal or the principal designee, which I understand. Um, I just worry about unconscious, um, decisions being made if that's not being tracked. So, and then I think that's something that can happen through the Equity and Inclusion Working Group, um, to track that kinda data, to make sure that people aren't making decisions that they don't even, they're not even aware that they're making. So those are the only couple of things that I had.
I think that's something we can work towards, um, through a more thorough revision in conjunction with some of these other groups, including the diversity task force.
Anything else? Um, anything from people on to? All right, um...
Taking iPods and... As a teacher who started my career when students had pagers, taking iPods out of it hurt a little bit, but that's not really a comment.
Sorry. Um, all right, well, on this one, um, if there are no further comments, I would take a motion to approve the handbooks?
I'll do three, um, because they're all different names. So I'll make a motion to approve the updated elementary family student handbook for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Jen, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? Okay, great, that's, those elementaries are approved unanimously?
I'll make a motion to approve the updated Hingham Middle School Student Handbook for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? All right, approved as well, and...
Finally, I will make a motion to approve the updated High School Student Handbook Code of Discipline for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
I have a second. Thank you, any further discussion on the High School handbook? Um, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? No, great, the handbooks are approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
And those will be up on those website...
Sure.
Sure, I will. Okay, thank you. Um, all right, on to a number of new business items. Um, the first is, uh, seven point one, to review proposed superintendent goals for fiscal year twenty-three and to act as appropriate. Um, if you don't mind, I'll do a quick intro. So, um, myself, Ness, and Jen met with Dr. Adams to go over, um, the goals for the year. That's one of the biggest, um, parts of the school committee job, is to set goals and evaluate the superintendent. Um, Dr. Adams actually put together a great presentation of what the proposed goals are. Um, it's in your packet as well, but I'll, um, hand it over to Dr. Adams to, um, go through, and then, um, if the committee will take a vote on whether or not we want to adopt these goals for this year.
So as, um, the chair said, in your packet is both, um, a memo describing in more detail. There's a presentation as well as from MASC. Um, there's a, a book, a guidebook, kind of on, on evaluating the superintendent. So you have those three pieces of material. Um, just a reminder, there's a five-step process, and this process is similar to the ones, uh, process we use with teachers, as well as school and district leaders, and it begins with the self-assessment portion. In this case, the self-assessment is that entry plan, it's sort of the, you know, the, sort of provides a scope of, of the work ahead, um, and what's, what has been done so far, and, and a little bit looking forward. Today, tonight, um, sort of presenting some goals, um, and an action plan, um, to all of you. And then, um, after tonight, hopefully begin implementing that plan. Later in the winter, I'll come back and present some evidence. Um, through the implementation of the plan, I'll be collecting evidence and artifacts, um, to share with you, to show the progress towards these goals. Um, in the wintertime, probably around January or February, we'll share back, um, some of those artifacts, um, and there'll be a formative assessment where you'll give some feedback on the progress so far. And then at the end of the school year, we'll do the summit of evaluation, which is the formal rating process that happens. Um, three, I'll share with you three goals. Um, the first one being that, um, entry and direction setting for the district, and that's to focus on the development of comprehensive plans for the district that include that, um, identification of need and working towards continuous improvement that'll address those needs most effectively and the measures used to assess progress. Some key actions that I'm outlining is, you know, developing a system and structure to gather feedback from families and students as the year progresses. Um, we hope by the next meeting to share with you a communication plan, um, that we have a draft of and are collecting some feedback on, and we'll share with the school committee in September. Um, plan to present three updates on the strategic plan. Um, presenting in February or late January, an entry plan, um, entry findings, the findings of the entry plan. We've started a process to evaluate and plan, um, with an outcome of a plan at the end of our technology needs. And that process is ju, has just, has already started and, um, hope to accelerate it once we get students and teachers back in school. We've also began a process, um, for, um, an evaluation and assessment, um, of our diversity and equity and inclusion efforts, um, and, which will also end with an equity audit that we'll present in the spring to the school committee. Um, and in the summer of two thousand twenty-three, based upon all of this work, present an updated strategic plan based upon the first year of implementation. Um, goal two, I think one of the things we often have to remember, even though I, superintendent, am working through an entry plan, all of the things that happened to open and, and every day in schools are still going on. Um, so this goal is around maintain, maintaining momentum during this transition, and it really focuses on developing, um, student learning professional practice goals with school and district leaders, um, school improvement goals. So you can see this through line, and we call it sort of this focused collective effort, where we have these strategic plan, our professional goals, our student learning goals, both from school and district leaders and our educators, align with the strategic plan. Our school improvement goals that we'll present, hopefully, um, sometime this fall, align with the strategic plan, and there's this throughway that happens, so we're all working collectively towards, um, similar goals. Um, so that will be much of the work we do, um, as a leadership team. Um, you'll also see, I didn't mention with goal one, some specific standards that are highlighted, um, that, to, to focus on that are kind of aligned, um, with the focus of that goal. Some key actions, as I said, establishing, um, student learning and professional practice goals with school and district leaders, especially, um, principals and district, um, administrators. Um, giving them feedback on their formatives and summative evaluations on their progress towards those goals. Um, aligning our school improvement plans with the strategic plan. Um, developing and really focusing on systems and structures for data. Um, and, um, you saw a little bit of that to, tonight, where the data gives us some information on the current status of our students, but you also heard how that data really informs the department in teaching and learning to really further and deepen the progress that we're making. Um, working, um, to establish with the leadership team and, on outline and process for the budget development process, um, and supporting the foster school building project that's moving ahead at lightning speed. Um, goal three, um, as, um, Meg Mayo Brown spoke about, is the participation in the new superintendent induction program and completing some key benchmarks involved, um, in that program. You'll see, again, those particular focus standards. Um, and attending, um, those sessions of, um, and the NISIP can, um, outlining, um, and, um, completing key assignments, um, that are part of NISIP, that are meant to support the transition of the superintendent, the entry plan, um, the report of the entry findings, and that really focus on updating the strategic plan to really lead the district moving forward. Um, and making use of, um, the instructional coach to help deepen, um, my own practice and inform my own practice. I think that was it.
Are there any questions from the committee? Have any questions, comments, thoughts?
Yeah, these are great, and yeah, thank you for putting them together and making them measurable, because that's something we've been pushing for, for a while. Um, I guess my only question is, one question is about the key focus indicators that are listed at the front. Um, data-informed decision-making is part of all of them. I, I don't know if we wanna make that part of one, one of the ones, I know you have to have one from each standard. Um, but I, I think it's worth highlighting that that's a focus, um, so that would be one thing. And then for goal one, um, you look at the benchmarks and kind of the evidence that was, um, was be presented, and I feel like community feedback might be a, an important one for that one, because that's, that's sort of the, the point, uh, to have a system of getting feedback from the community too, so, some thoughts.
Great, thank you. The data-driven in, 'cause that's really, should be covered in all of them?
Well, it is, it is, uh, it's listed in all of them, so...
Okay. Oh, right, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, Matt?
Yep, on that comment, or maybe making a different one. Uh, so I think this is great. I do think, uh, the communication plan will be, uh, in some of the, the communication plan will be an important bridge to the community. I do think, uh, it doesn't, I'm not asking that it be explicitly stated here, and I think you've, you've said it explicitly previously, building deeper trust between, uh, the superintendent, the, the school committee, and the community. You know, the pandemic obviously was, was difficult. We've had a lot of different superintendents over the last several years, will be incredibly important. Um, so again, not saying it needs to be here, uh, in words, but I think that's an important, um, piece.
Great, yep. Um, anything? Do we mention to the public who were answered that they do have a question?
I said it at the beginning, if people had a question too.
Okay, sorry, I was, I was logging on, so I wanted to ask that, so I wanted people to ask, thank you.
Okay.
No, no, that's why.
You're welcome. Um, all right, like, again, thank you for, um, working with us and putting this together. Um, we haven't had to do a evaluation in a video here, so forgive us in the spring if we're not, uh, it's, it's, it's tough. It's, uh, it's, it's tough to do. But this is very helpful, because when it's very specific with specific goals and, you know, and, um, data points that we can tie back to, it will make the job of doing it much, much easier than it has sometimes been in the past. Yes, um, for those of us who are a little rusty at it. Um, all right, well, if nothing else, um, I would take a motion to adopt these goals as presented.
Sure, I'll make a motion to adopt the superintendent goals for fiscal year twenty twenty-three as presented.
Does this what carries...
I actually didn't ask about that. So you had said getting feedback from the families and students?
Community, so, yeah.
Okay. Cause, yeah, 'cause I had, I saw that in there, 'cause that was one of the things that, when we were chatting about that.
But I don't know that it necessarily will change anything, and we will get feedback. So, um, it's just something we would consider as we do the evaluation, wouldn't necessarily have to be in her goals.
Okay.
Yeah, so...
Right, so I think what we're looking for is, as the systems are developed, that we're, you, we're undertaking them to rebuild trust, rapport.
Yeah, and listening, yeah, yep.
Part of the entry plan was making space for opportunities to hear from the community more than has been possible through the summer months. Um, as we get students back in school and teachers on, on site, um, creating opportunities for that. Some of those things are in the works, and some of them are, you know, gotta get started, so, yeah.
So I will second the motion. All right, great, um, any further discussion? Done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Any of us approved? Thank you, Doc. Thank you, Dr. Adams. All right, um, we're gonna turn this meeting over to Jen now.
Um, we have several, several new policies to, uh, review, um, some to act as appropriate. Are any of these first reads or no? I guess they are all.
They're all first reads.
They were all first reads, okay.
I'll, I'll stop after each one for the, for mo- oh, we don't have to do much.
Okay.
So I will just go through, I will. No. Correct.
Okay.
So I will go through all four?
Okay.
Okay, all right, so, uh, each policy, um, they're in your packets with the recommendation. Recommended additions are in the red text. Uh, each of these policies, as I said, are a first read tonight and we'll have a second read at our, at our following meeting. Um, and we will add these draft policies to the district website after tonight's meeting to give the public an opportunity to review them and then ask questions before, um, we have a second read. Um, and then I will also note that the reason why three of these four policies came before the policy subcommittee was, um, due to the recommendations of the wellness committee in the spring. Um, and then additionally, Dr. Adams, um, made her recommendations for consideration. And then those, uh, recommendations are reflected in these proposed changes. So, starting with policy I J O A, which is field trips. Um, the recommendation is to add the following change in wording, um, it says, it's, I'll just start the sentence. It's, um, all out of state or extended overnight trips and excursions. Um, the recommendation is to take out the word except and then add in including so that it would be including those required for student participation in tournament competitions or contests must have advanced approval by the committee. Um, and the reason behind this is because of the state. Out of state and overnight trips fall under the school committee's discretion and that's what, that's the reason for the recommended change. Um, are there any questions on that policy?
Just to why it was the way it was.
They reached out to MASC to find out. It's their template that we adopted. And I, I guess in some, uh, districts, they, there are certain like bands or it said it's usually band and dance team where they might have, they might get accepted into a tournament or competition right away and they wouldn't have time for the committee to convene. Um, Dr. Adams worked with, um, Coach Q and, uh, and Mr. Swanson, and they don't think that'll be an issue at the high school, so that's what.
Good. Um, that's the only thing I was wondering about for sports and bands.
That one too.
Okay, yeah.
So if that happened, I guess, is there a way that we could? What I wouldn't want is by adopting this, all of a sudden, we don't think it's gonna happen, but, you know, if someone gets accepted, is there a way that we can approve without having a formal meeting? I think no, right?
No, we could, we could have a, schedule an extra meeting, no?
Okay.
We'd just need two days, which they didn't seem to think.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this doesn't happen, um.
Yeah.
They couldn't think of an instance where they did not have sufficient notice to put it on a school committee's agenda.
Cool.
Yeah, and if that's necessary, we can always make a special meeting to, even if it's not one of our regular scheduled. Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so, moving on to policy J J I B, which is interscholastic athletics. Um, so the wellness committee had recommended that an additional policy be created for M I A waivers. However, at this time, the subcommittee is only recommending that the following language be added to our current, um, interscholastic athletics policy. And that language being that the athletic director will provide a seasoned report, um, three times annually to the school committee and the administration outlining the number of approved grade eight waivers by sports.
Sorry, oh, wait, no, I just wanted to also clarify that, um, we spoke with Dr. Adams and she had spoken with Coach Q. And I guess the M I A policies themselves cover the eighth grade, the concern with the eighth graders that might be playing high school sports. So we didn't feel a need for an extra policy.
Is that just a process? Is that gonna be a written report that's given to school committee or is that a presentation? Is that a?
Uh, it was my understanding would be a written report at, given to us at school committee.
Yes, a written memo stating whether or not there were any waivers.
Okay. If it was gonna be an in-person report, I might farm it out to a subcommittee, but.
No, I, I would say, uh, under the superintendent's report, it's something we report out to the school committee.
Perfect, thank you.
Similar to like our, like tonight when we did new staff members and.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
So moving on to policy J H, student absences and excuses. Um, to the, we had met, the policy subcommittee met, um, a couple of times on this, um, once with Dr. Venice and then once with Dr. Adams. Uh, to discuss the possibility of a teletho- teletherapy, telehealth policy. Um, it was brought to our attention that, um, the high school had been seeing an increase in students engaging in remote therapy sessions during school hours, um, and it was recommended that we look into this and take it up with policy. Um, and so our recommendation is to add the following language into our current student absences and excuses policy, which would state, uh, private scheduled appointments, including therapy, that is telehealth, require a dismissal form school and appointments may not be held within the school building. Any questions on that?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, cause.
So. How is it taking, well, two questions. One, if you're dismissed, I should probably know this, can you go back to school? Like, so let's say I have a nine AM appointment, okay. And then how is it taking, like, were people just doing it instead? I don't know who to ask, but like, it.
I think they were, there was, yeah, during class, you know, you would leave. The challenge was they were looking for space, there's not sufficient space. And then coverage was a concern and even liability, so a student has a telehealth leaves there. And what might, there's not an adult there to judge or support their transition back to class. So there were a couple of places where it was just concerning, where they should be dismissed and be under their parents' care or caregiver's care and then come back to school, obviously, if they, they could or would.
Yeah, and, and the subcommittee, um, we had a, I think a pretty good discussion about this because obviously we're, we recognize the challenge of how it, hard it is to make therapy appointments these days. Um, unfortunately, when they're scheduled at the same time every week, that, um, those, those kids are missing class on a regular schedule. So.
And I think it's an important distinction that it's, it's putting a big burden on the classroom teachers if a student has gone and had a therapy appointment and then has to transition back to the classroom without having that either, um, mental health professional or a parent involved in it, right? Because, you know, sometimes the sessions can be overwhelming, you know? Um, yeah, and I think that's, um, not, I think that's the antithesis of what we're trying to do in improving mental health of the students. I think that potential has the potential for making it worse, so I would agree with that.
Do we see that I totally agree? I imagine ten years ago, this wasn't even talked about, right? It wasn't a thing, really, telehealth. Uh, like, do we know what other districts are, d- you know, are, are we kind of at the forefront here of putting a policy in place or?
We were at the forefront of this. We, uh, we looked at to see if there are other districts that had any, um, policies related to teleph- I mean, in Massachusetts, we couldn't find any.
Yeah, my only, uh, so I agree with this. I, my only head, I guess the reason I'm pushing a little bit or talking about it is what, I think any of us, of course, would want is, you know, this, this prohibits some, you know, they, we want them in school, obviously, but they can't get another appointment at any other time and they can't get out of school. So I don't think that's gonna happen very often, but that's why, where my mind was going and I just wanted to kind of say that out loud. Uh, but all the reasons that everyone said here makes sense to me.
And just to clarify, because I think it was a little bit of a nod rather than, um, an affirmative, but students can be dismissed from school and returned to school. So just to clarify that, so students can leave school to go to an appointment and then come back.
Things that came up in discussion was just the lack of this, of space to, so it's really something that requires some privacy and discussion for the students. So it's a little uncomfortable, I would think, for them to be in a setting where other students may see them going to the session or.
Yep.
Heal things and probably not appropriate.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Great, thank you. One more?
One more, yes.
I love those ones. So the next, um, policy is K B E, which is relations with parent booster organizations. Um, this was another, um, policy that would, the wellness report recommended that a revised reporting structure for all boosters and parent groups be defined for the district. Um, and then the subcommittee is recommending that the following changes be made to policy K B E. Um, to add in the language that the superintendent of schools will develop a process for executing the intent of the policy and present it to the Hingham Public Schools Committee. The process will include detailed regulations and requirements for boosters and support organizations. Further, the superintendent of schools will present proposed changes in the process prior to their actual implementation to the Hingham Public Schools Committee. And the other thing that will be, that we're recommending being changed in our current policy is to remove the line that states all parent organizations shall obtain a five oh one C three status and file appropriate paperwork with state authorities and make proof of such status available to the school district administration. We're, um, recommending that we remove that.
I think that's a great suggestion, but I agree with that. Any questions or comments on this? Okay, um, anything, sorry, Sheri, anything from folks on Zoom or Jen, can you tell? I don't see anyone's hand raised. Okay, all right. Great, that was a lot of work. Um, so thank you for that, that's, um, but I think these, I don't want to say they're really coming together because the policies have given us, we've been working on these policies so long. But I think once we adopted the whole mask, uh, mask, M A S C policy, not M A S K policy. I'm gonna clarify, we're not talking about masks anymore. Um, but after updating it for the Massachusetts, Massachusetts Associated School Committee policies, there just been the little tweaks that we've had to make um, to represent and reflect our district's mission and values. So appreciate all the work that is going into fine tuning this now. Um, all right, um, item seven point six, um, is to discuss a proposal to reestablish the special ed education and curriculum subcommittees as two independent subcommittees. Um, and just to act as appropriate, because I wanted to bring that back to the committee. I think this year we sunsetted, um, the wellness subcommittee. Um, we thought about combining the special education and curriculum subcommittees into one, but, um, changing my mind now. And I would like to separate out and keep the special ed subcommittee as a separate standalone committee. Um, and reestablish a curriculum, a separate curriculum subcommittee. Um, Tim, I don't know if you want to speak to it at all.
Sure, I mean, just making it explicit that a lot of this, the proposed change and then changing back was due to, uh, communication from the public and, uh, and concerns about combining the committees. So we're listening to people and for the time being separating them again. Uh, the special ed committee will continue, assuming this passes, the special ed committee will continue as it has in previous years. And we are meeting this week to discuss the curriculum committee and what the future of that will be. And by we, I mean, uh, the, the chair, the superintendent and assistant superintendent, so.
Yes, um, so yeah, so and if we do decide, if we vote in favor of splitting the two, um, committees into their own separate in- independent committees, then I would just ask folks to let me know if they're interested in, um, serving on the curriculum committee. And I'll make the appointments as determined. Um, so any questions or thoughts about this? Anyone wanna? Generally? Anyone wanna make a motion then?
I can make a motion.
Do you want to make?
Sure, yeah, I'll make a motion to reestablish the special ed and curriculum subcommittees as independent subcommittees.
And I will second. All right, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, great, okay, we'll do that. All right, so just on, send me an email and let me know if you're interested in serving on the curriculum subcommittee. If you want to chair it. Um, all right, um, seven point seven is to review requests for professional development revolving accounts and act as appropriate.
Love professional development. So our intent with this was, um, to think about, um, if and when we offer, when we offer professional development. Sometimes you have a professional development session and you, maybe you have twenty slots and we have fifteen Hingham teachers to be able to take the remaining five spots and offering them for a fee to, um, surrounding districts and be able to use that and deposit that in a, in a, in a fund and be able then to reuse those funds in order to continue to enhance professional development in the district. Um, so that was the intent of sort of creating an account where those funds could go and then be reused. So as we think about, um, and we have big ideas about thinking about how we might enhance professional development in the district, um, that was the thinking of this particular, um, thinking of this account.
Yep.
Uh, it seems like a great idea, uh, just putting out there one use of the funds might be, I know we're been, uh, working to try to convince more teachers to get like, or in Gillingham certified or things. We might be able to think about stipending teachers who take those, because those are like week-long courses over, multiple week-long courses over the summer to, if we could stipend the teachers, that might encourage more teachers to participate in it and get certified. For Orton Gillingham, all our teachers are certified.
No, I think this is a great idea, I mean, um, great revenue, potential revenue generator.
Potential, yeah.
Yes, and, um, and can be put to very good use for professional development, bringing in, I mean, sometimes I think there are great speakers that can be a bit costly and to bring those in to, you know, run whole staff, um, trainings or sessions. Um, I mean, I think we all acknowledge that teaching has become a very, very fluid career. And I mean, the professional development needs are really high in this, um, in this career, right, particularly these days. Um, so I think this is a great idea. Uh, Ness?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we are allowed to sell the seats.
It depends on the vendor, but some, it depends on the, a contract with the vendor. So usually, yes, you have an, you've bought for amount of seats and you can use the funding. You're saying you're collecting that funding in order to support that particular service? Yes, so yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I've. I've done it many times in the past.
Over the Mass General Law and I didn't see anything.
Right.
That's how we could, but that doesn't mean.
I, right, I, and I had, I went back and forth with, um, Sue Nickerson, who's the town accountant, just to make sure because there's specific Mass General Law on, um, revolving funds and I wanted to make sure that the setting it up is appropriate. Because there's specific, um, specific revolving funds that schools can do. Um, but we can also establish other revolving accounts as well. And I had, um, noted to Dr. Adams earlier on the memo that they had provided in our packet. It said the accounting, um, shall include revenues, refunds and payroll. Um, Master on the law is specific that we can't include payroll there, so they're just gonna strike the payroll word out of that. So that was my second comment.
So back of our, we wouldn't be able to pay us stipend?
That would. Cause that would be considered payroll.
Right.
Okay.
So we couldn't stipend out of this. Sorry. But the, but still.
Sorry.
But you could maybe fi- well, but you could find, but you might be able to find money in the budget to pay that now because you've taken it and funded something else out of professional development.
You've found something else so that you can then use your other funds for something else.
Yeah. Um, this is, I, I think this is a very creative idea and I'm not sure whose idea it was, but, um, or maybe it was a joint effort. But kudos, because I think this is really creative and just sort of what we need. And I just think for anyone who might be listening and saying, oh, another revolving fund for the school committee, but this one will generate revenue and help us offset what are very high professional development needs that frankly, we probably aren't meeting enough of. So this is a way to sort of self-fund some of these needs.
Yeah, I agree, it's very creative, I mean, because it's, it's making good use of the funds, but it's also increasing, sorry, the, the professional development in the district, which is fantastic. It's two birds with one stone, so.
Yep, it's great. Idea. Um, well, would that be, does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the creation of a professional development revolving account that will be utilized for receipts and expenses related to professional development for the benefit of Hingham Public Schools employees.
All right, I will second, thank you. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No, great, approved. Great idea, thank you. Uh, item seven point eight, to declare surplus of materials and act as appropriate. Is that Aisha?
Yeah, so we, we'd like to declare two vans, school vans and special ed vans as surplus, uh, two thousand and six and two thousand and seven forty E three fifty. Um, those vans are, the mileage on these vans are very high and they pretty much can't be used, um, in our department and in our transportation department anymore because they are rotted, the body, and we, it's not safe to have students in those anymore. So we'd like to be able to declare those as surplus and, um, try to get rid of them in the cheapest possible way to Hingham Public Schools.
Thank you. Um, any questions on this? Um, any questions on this? All right, um, does someone want to make a motion?
I'd be happy to. I'll make a motion to declare a surplus, the twenty, two thousand and six and two thousand and seven Ford E three fifty special education vans as detailed in item seven point eight and to authorize the Director of Business and Support Services to dispose of the vans at the least cost to Hingham.
I will second. And, uh, any further discussion? Yes, I have something. Sorry, I just want to, um, clarify though, that we do have replacement vehicles for this, so this is not.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear to folks listening, so.
In fact, it's, it's funny that you should ask, because, um, one of the things that you approved before this was, um, was that we just have three vans.
Yes.
One of them we've received, um, and two of them are in back order.
Okay.
Because they're just not available right now. Um, but Patrick has assured me that it will not hinder him in any way in terms of transporting, um, our kids dur- during the school year.
Great, thank you.
At least for now, yes.
Thank you for clarifying that. All right, um, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, great. That is, item seven point eight is done as well. Um, all right, item seven point nine is to receive coaching, ball coaching assignments. It is starting, folks, sorry, school's coming back.
Mm-hmm.
Do, um, do you have anything, or just?
No, I know they were on the field this morning until it started to rain and, um, then they rushed, but they did mind the rain. Um, we were glad to see some rain on, on our fields and our, our lawn, so. Um, so I know the season's getting started, um, for some sports and, um, we'll see the rollout of additional seasons, um, as the year goes on, as the couple of weeks go on.
Okay, great, a couple of new coaches in here, nice to see, so, all right, it's great. Um. We didn't do anything with that, right? It's just receiving that? All right, thank you very much. Um, all right, item eight, moving on to Subcommittee and Project Reports. Um, I'll just go around the table, I'll start with Ally.
So we had a climate action planning committee meeting last week and they are moving fast and furious towards their, um, deadline this fall for their climate action plan. There are two public engagement sessions coming up. There's one on the fourteenth, which will be an in-person session. Location's still to be announced. And then there will be a second session following on its heels on the twentieth, which will be a Zoom session for anyone who's interested to do a, um, meeting online instead of in person. So that is moving right along. And then for Hingham Arts Alliance, they had a wonderful event about a week back now to introduce Joanne Ballas to the community and get, um, some feedback for her from parents and just get people excited about the arts programs this fall. So it was a really nice event and kind of a kickoff for the Hingham Arts Alliance. And they have a meeting coming up on the fifteenth of September. And that's it on my end.
I have nothing.
Great.
Uh, the Special Ed Subcommittee, uh, we decided on that tonight, so we will be having a meeting very soon, uh, in September. Uh, I will get, throw some dates out to, uh, the parties that be. Um, and the Hingham Educational Foundation is having a board meeting on September thirteenth. Uh, I'm actually unable to go, I was going to check to see if someone else on the committee, we can talk outside the committee, but I'm throwing that out, if someone wants to jump in for that one. I have a, my day job meets that night. Uh, and the, and they're going to be, the half, is going to be meeting every second Tuesday of the month ongoing, uh, which puts their next meeting at a conflict with our next meeting, but I'll see if we can work that out.
No, we're not, we're not, what were you talking about?
Okay, okay. Uh, the Human Rights Commission had a meeting in July. Uh, we're really working on our mission statement and getting the, uh, committee. We're really sort of at the early stages of the committee, uh, sort of figuring out our policies and, uh, how we're operating and what our mission is. Uh, we did have a really great, uh, presentation and want to highlight and thank Eileen Walsh from the Police Department, who's the, uh, Community, uh, Mental Health Officer. Uh, she gave a great presentation and that was really well received. Uh, their next meeting's going to be September twenty eighth. And office hours, we are bringing back office hours now that the school year is starting again. Uh, so our first office hours are going to be Monday, September nineteenth, uh, maybe with Carrie and I. Uh, so that's going and we're going to try to do them once a month. So, and stay on top of it.
Do you, do you want to, you guys want to do it? Okay.
Sure.
And then, um, once a month.
With the rotating, assuming that.
Yep, and the, there, is that the third Monday, are you thinking? Or just sort of in between meetings?
I was going to do it on, keep it on a Monday and do it in between school committee meetings, so people have in their heads Monday is school committee night.
Yes, okay.
I know that's in my head.
Next Monday. Um, okay. Um, great, thank you. Um, Carrie?
Uh, salary negotiations, um, I reached out to Sarah Spatafor, who's our attorney. We have a couple of things to deal with, with, um, the Administrators Association. There was a, a piece of their contract that we needed to work through and they had a small group together to, um, to talk about it and the COVID hit and it kind of got put on the back burner. So we're, we need to meet to do that. And, um, then with Unit A too, we talked about a, a flex block in schedules and they've requested to negotiate that as a change in working conditions. Um, so I reached, I reached out to Sarah and she was going to reach out to the reps. Um, so she's, it has, um, I think Sheila, Sheila McCarthy, who's repping the Administrators Association, will get back with some dates. And then Chris Galvin, who was the MTA rep for our, um, the Unit A, um, is moving to the Rainham office, so they're going to get a new rep. So we'll have to, um, see and we'll see if they want to meet before or, um, wait for the new person.
Okay, so, awesome, thank you.
I want to also just mention, we're going, we'll be, um, entering negotiations for successor contracts with all six unions this year, so, um, we'll get going. I met with Dr. Adams about that and we'll, but we'll plan on scheduling, scheduling something sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
Jen?
Policy met, let's meet. As you all know. That's all I, and that's all I have, um, to report on.
That's it.
Okay.
Um, I did sign some warrants, they're not in the packet, so I'll, I'll get them in there for the next time. Um, and then also finance, we will schedule something. I met with, um, Dr. Adams and Ayesha, um, about scheduling something and we're going to look to do that for September sometime. Um, and then I'm not sure if you want to mention AdCom.
Yeah, I will.
Okay, and that's it.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Um, I just have a couple of things, um, a few of us, myself, Dr. Adams, Dr. Katie Roberts, Tim, Patrick Cunningham and Principal Sheffley from Foster School went to the Metco Ice Cream Social in Boston a couple of weeks ago. Um, got to meet some families, got to spend some time in the van, driving down together. Um, it was a great event, it was really well, it was really well attended. Um, and our outgoing, um, Metco Director Carol Perez had, um, gotten some Metco swag bags to give the students who were there, so it was really nice. Um, we are, um, excited about our new Metco Director, um, this Amy Jackson coming to the district. Um, and, um, but anyway, it was great, it was great, it was really nice to see folks. We hadn't had that event in a couple of years due to COVID, so it was great to see folks face to face and had a lot of, oh yeah, I recognize that voice from Zoom. So it was nice, it was a good time. And I think it was great for Dr. Adams to meet, um, the students and the families. Um, and it was great, it was a good time. Um, the School Building Committee is just, ooh, it is on, it is really cooking now. Um, we have a lot of meetings, um, we've had a couple of, um, meetings with Conservation Committee and we have another one coming up, I believe it is next week. Tonight there was a Planning Board meeting, um, that members of the School Building Committee were attended. Um, I think that was the first Planning Board meeting, um, with one or two more potentially scheduled as follow-up. I'll find out after we leave here. Um, tomorrow night at six PM, the Building Committee is attending the Select Board Meeting, um, where they're going to be discussing how the, these projects, including Foster and the Public Safety Building will be financed. Um, and then AdCom is having a, their agenda does say hearing and discussion of the Foster Building Project tomorrow. Um, it is in person and via Zoom. Um, I wasn't made aware that the, that the Building Committee and, the Building Committee wasn't, didn't find out that the meeting was happening until Friday, late morning Friday, so I did not post it as a school committee meeting. But I think that's appropriate, because it's not, it's not technically our project, right? So myself, Ness and Jen will be there as just the executive board of the School Committee. I'll be there as a representative to the Building Committee to answer questions. Dr. Adams will be there, I think Katie will be there. Well, no, Ayesha will be there. Um, there's a, a fair number of questions. Ayesha, a big shout out to Ayesha, she spent a lot of time putting together a document um, that answered a lot of the sort of frequently asked questions that I think AdCom, um, had and that I think the community will have. Um, so we've got a good presentation to put together to AdCom. Um, so if people do want to attend, it is in person and also on Zoom. Um, we will not call to order, so if you attend, you'll be there as a citizen, not as a school committee member, but you can attend if you'd like to listen in. Um, I think that's it.
I've got something coming in.
Yeah, yes.
Appropriate to jump in on the Building Committee.
Yeah.
Uh, but in Tom Mayo, uh, organized a tour of the facilities in July. Uh, several tours for school committee members and other, uh, town, people who work in the town. Uh, and I think he said he was going to try to, uh, do more of that. If anyone, it was incredibly illuminating, uh, about the physical needs uh, of some of the buildings in our districts, uh, including Foster and the North Fire Station and all that. So it was, huh?
The police station.
The police station, right. So, um, really encourage people to do that facilities tour if it comes around again, but also just want to thank Tom Mayo for organizing that, because it was incredibly helpful and illuminating, uh, for me.
We have like four dates for the tours. Oc- October sixth, October seventeenth, October twenty second and October twenty fifth. And there will also be, um, town meetings being held, um, during, during October as well. And the dates for those will be the thirteenth and nineteenth and twenty second.
How would a member from the public get on one of the facilities tours? Is it just emailing?
So I, I think there'll be correspondence on that coming. Um, we just set up those dates as a save the date sort of thing for now and then more, with more information to be, um, to be distributed.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Your intent is that it's open to the community to come during those times to come, to see the building?
Yeah, I mean, if anyone has any questions about the mini building projects that are potentially going on in town, it was incredibly helpful.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you for reminding that, and for having the dates. Um, speaking of dates, um, just quickly, before we adjourn, we have a couple of things. Um, so the School Committee is invited to attend new teacher orientation and convocation. Um, teacher convocation is the thirty first and then all staff is the first. What time and where are those, you just, you know, the, the middles, do you know?
New, new, new teacher orientation?
Yep.
On Monday at, um, at the middle school.
Okay.
Breakfast at eight.
Eight AM, okay.
Speeches begin at eight thirty.
All right.
Uh, and convocation, um, breakfast at eight o'clock and similarly, um.
And it's at the high school?
Yes, that is at the high school, correct.
Okay, all right. So eight AM-ish on both of those, all those dates. Thank you, Katie. Um, all right, and then our next School Committee meeting is September twelfth. Um, and then Saturday, September seventeenth, we'll have our School Committee Workshop. Um, so we'll send out some more information on that, we can talk about the next meeting as well. Um, then, um, September twenty sixth, we'd had a meeting scheduled, but, um, that does happen to be, um, Rosh Hashanah. So we're going to cancel that meeting. Because we're having the workshop on the seventeenth, Dr. Adams and I were hopeful that maybe we can just not have that second September meeting, um, because we will have had two meetings in September and then have, go back to our regular schedule in October, which starts off not normal, because that's a Tu- that first meeting is a Tuesday because of the Indigenous Peoples' Day holiday. But if something comes up and we feel we need to meet the week of the twenty sixth, we'll put something out. But for right now, let's assume that one's canceled, we won't have to meet. All right. Um, and then already got a preliminary, uh, budget meeting with AdCom, ACES team on, for November ninth at six PM, if people can pencil that in. And, um, other than that, item nine is, uh, items not reasonably known, forty-eight hours before the meeting. You don't have anything? I do know that, all right, well, with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.